Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbard's Board of Selectmen, joint in part with the Hubbard's Planning Board, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via Zoom. In the event that we're unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website a comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Okay, do you have something you want to say before we open it to open meeting?
Yes, just briefly, there's a lot of folks attending here. This initial part, this community outreach meeting is at the request of Bowie and Paper Crane Cannabis. So he will be running that part of the meeting. We're accommodating it during this open meeting. So in order to protect from Zoom bombing and other issues, we are asking that anybody that wants to participate in the meeting, type in the chat what they would like to talk about, and we will accommodate or make decisions on whether or not to bring them into the screen or read the questions aloud. Other than that, just wanted to let people know, we're trying to accommodate everyone as quickly as possible, and this is more people than we normally have, so just bear with us.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to start with open meeting. Now, I just want to say sort of out loud that anybody can speak, of course, at open meeting about anything they would like to, but if, just to restate what Ryan said, if you are here for items that are on our agenda, if you've been able to see and access our agenda, including the proposed marijuana establishment delivery, the discussion that we're going to have shortly, actually, and could hold it off to then, that'd be great, because we will be focusing on it at that time, but beyond that, Ryan, anybody want to talk about anything open session wise?
Not that I can see right now.
Okay, well, anyway, if somebody wants to join in chat, please do that. We're we're not that regimented bunch as it comes to sort of dealing with what we need to. So we will move on from open session to announcements. Katie, you want to give us a little recap of the lighting ceremony as well as announcements of the light fight and whatever else?
Sure. So we had a very lovely town center lighting ceremony this past Saturday. Ryan and Dan and Santa all joined me. I'm pretty sure the police department was there too, but they were kind of off in the shadows because it was rather dark. But they, we had a very nice, everything went off without a hitch. Nobody totally busted up any cords tripping over lines that are out and about in the common. But if you drive through the common, you will see a very nicely well-lit common with 20 deer and 8,000 little twinkly lights and a beautiful tree, thanks to Parks and Racks, and the menorah is up there, thanks to the GPW. So that went off very well this Saturday, and if you want to see the actual video of it being lit off, it is on Facebook under Hubbard's Celebration. The next thing is also the light fight. That's why we did the tree lighting ceremony so early, because the light fight is officially kicking off this weekend, and you have only until tomorrow to enter. So if you have not dropped off your entry form, you need to do it either tonight or tomorrow. I need it in a Dropbox or at the town offices or get it into my hot little hands, so I can put you on a fun map. And this weekend starts it off, it's going to be Friday, Saturday and Sundays for the next three weekends from five to nine. We will have a electronic map, and we will also have, I'm going to try to do up a paper map as well, so people can follow up. They can pick up the paper map either at maybe the town offices or at Mr. Mike's can ask for some papers apps, and there'll be a listing as well. So I hope everybody comes out. My lights are already on. A lot of peoples are already on. So you could already see some of them already, but the map will have everybody that has officially listed. So I hope everybody that's willing to enter enters, and I hope we have a good time.
And Katie, I just want to thank you directly for all the work you've done for this. I think that clearly the town has noticed, not just, you know, the number of views already on the sort of Facebook live event that we have, but just with people lighting up, because that didn't sound right. People lighting their houses up. And, you know, anyway, want to appreciate, I know it's a stressful thing as well. It went off perfect. I mean, it was short and sweet, just like you sort of planned it. Everything went off, and so I just really want to thank you for that, because I know you put a lot of time and effort into it.
All right, we'll do it again next year.
Oh, you got the job forever. Oh, my gosh, you got the job forever. You absolutely do. So, okay, well, moving on, Ryan, no other items there that you want to talk about as far as announcements? Okay, presentations, I see none? Nope, okay. So we'll move on to new business, which item four A, which is the proposed marijuana establishment delivery in parentheses, community outreach hearing at 6:30. That's joint with Planning Board. So Alice, obviously, you guys are here to join the conversation formally. You've got the floor for a moment to open the meeting if you so choose.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just want to call the planning board meeting to order and stay. We do, we do have a quorum, Francois Steiger, Bill Holman and myself. We're a four board, four member committee at the moment. And I don't know whether Erica is there or not pictured, but at least we have a quorum. She's our alternate. So.
Alice, she is in attendance.
Okay, so just for the record, I'll call to order to declare a quorum present and turn it back over to Dan.
Sounds good. Thank you, Alice. So this is, this is about 50 Gardner Road, 56 Gardner Road, and Ryan said before, Ryan, why don't you say what you've said a few times, just again, for everybody who's either joining us late or sort of tuning in now mentally, because we're on that item, that, that the mechanics of why we're doing it this way, because we've already got this, you know, sort of board meeting mechanism.
Okay, so to give people the broadest access to this community meeting, and as is tradition, we've done this a few times now. We ask are we in any applicants to come to a board of selectmen meeting, just so it's in a recognizable place? So this meeting is this is Bowie's meeting, we are just hosting the vehicle for it. So anybody that wants to participate would type into the chat function. And just so the panelists know, we are getting a little bit of feedback, so I'm going to mute you all. If you're not speaking, please mute, so we can keep this going smoothly. So I'm going to turn it over to Bowie.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm Bowie Bertold, owner of will soon be Paper Crane Provisions. My retail store will be called Paper Crane Cannabis. And to open up, I have to read a, something that the CCC requires me to read. These are talking points for the meeting. They're posted on our website for this meeting, 56 Gardner. Say again? Oh, sorry. So I'm just going to go through these really quick, and then when I'm done with these, we'll open it up and I'll take questions. So the purpose of the community outreach meeting is to explain the proposed marijuana establishment use and provide information about potential impacts to the neighborhood and community as a whole. Number one, the location of the proposed marijuana establishment would be 56 Gardner Road, Hubbard's in Mass, oh, one, four, five, two. The types, what types of marijuana establishments will be cited at the location? Today, we are discussing a new type of license called a courier license and outdoor cultivation as well. Three, is the proposed marijuana establishment allowed under current zoning bylaws ordinance? Or is a zoning amendment required to allow it to go there? It is currently allowed. Four, is the proposed marijuana establishment allowed by right, or does it require local zoning permitting? What permits are required? Required? A special permit is required. Thank you, Ryan, for putting that up. Five, is there a local licensing regulation pertaining to marijuana establishments? Yes, the planning board approves the special permit. Six, is there a local board of health regulation pertaining to marijuana establishments? No, there is not. Number seven, does the proposed location comply with the 500-foot buffer zone from existing public or private school buildings K through 12? Yes, it does. And, and do the local bylaws or ordinance create a smaller buffer zone? No. Number eight, if the applicant is moving into an existing building or building a new one, will its premises comply with the security requirements set forth by the 935 CMR 500? Yes, it will. What steps will be taken by the marijuana establishment to prevent diversion to minors? Well, these businesses are have a lot of oversight, and we're only allowed to sell to people age 21 and up. We check IDs multiple times before purchase, and everything is sold in child-resistant packaging. Number 10, information demonstrating how the applicant intends to ensure that the location will not constitute a nuisance to the community as defined by law. We will be following all Hubbard's bylaws and regulations to make sure we are not a nuisance to the community as defined by law. And 11, a plan for how the marijuana establishment will positively impact the community. We will be getting into an agreement, which is the goal here with Hubbard's then to pay tax on a percentage of the sales. I can open it up.
All right, I'll start. So thanks for coming again tonight. I guess I'm just going to ask a question. Some of this, some of the couple of questions I have, I know the answers to, but I'd like to just make sure that everyone understands. So could you just explain to us, I guess, tonight, so what is the main reason you're before us here tonight?
So, well, yeah, delivery, so this, this delivery license that we're going to be seeking for the dispensary at 56 Gardner Road. So what it is, is it's basically a, the Cannabis Control Commission is now, is offering a courier service for people who don't wish to go into the establishment. They can, they'll be simply able to either order and pay online, and, and a vehicle will take the marijuana or the products to the person. That's half of it. The other half is proposing a, an outdoor grow, so just an outdoor cultivation site at 56 Gardner Road, where many of you know, we're going to be erecting some greenhouses, and in the back part of that lot, we would like to fence it in and grow some outdoor marijuana. So both of those things.
Okay, so in the delivery piece, clearly on the agenda, you know, lists that, that's a, you know, big reason why you're here tonight. So, so I guess we'll talk about a few of the details there. Again, I'll start and we can, anyone can chime in as we move along. But so you talked about one of the 11 questions and answers that you read, talked about being able to check IDs multiple times and all that. It seems like it's a little different when we're having online purchases as far as how your checks and balances go. My 13, 15-year-old daughters, I'm sure can buy many things that I have no idea about, not, not really joking. So, so how do you ensure that, you know, you, you're in full compliance with the law?
So in order to access this service from the dispensary, you have to actually come to the dispensary and register as a customer. So for those of you who have or have not gone to dispensaries, when you go to a dispensary, you go in, you usually usually go into a safe freeway type area, your ID is taken, your information is taken into the system, and then you're usually buzzed in to the establishment. So that actually has to happen in order to take part in this courier service. You have, you actually do have to come and sign up at the dispensary in person, where you will be, you know, your ID will be checked and vetted, and you'll be entered into the system. Only then will you be able to access the courier service.
And then how about at the door when it's delivered?
ID is checked, the, the it's checked again, obviously, like when you're, once it's going, when it's ordered, and, and the driver checks the ID, scans it, gives it back, and, and hand it off person to person.
Okay, so how about, you know, hours of operation for delivery for that portion of the service?
Just the hours that you're in, basically that you're open. So, you know, 10 to eight would be the delivery hours, possibly 11 to eight, depending on, you know, when, when we would be opening, you know, we're a ways off from that, so you know, no later than when the establishment's open.
Okay, again, I'm just asking all the questions we can. So seven days a week? I mean, is that, that sort of the plan?
Seven days a week.
Okay. All right, and so the outdoor grow, which Damon, who I think I saw is on here, has talked to us about, and I know you were present during some of that as well. You know, that's the second half of you said of why you're, you're here tonight. What, what, you know, what's, what's the same? Or I guess the real question is, what's different than, than anything we've seen before from, from us who haven't been able to study things as much as you guys have as being the proprietors of this?
I'm sorry, could, you know what, it just cut out for a second. Could you ask that one more time?
Sure, I mostly forgot what I said, but as far as what is different, if anything, about that outdoor grow plan than what we've heard before, if anything?
Well, our, our plan at 56 Gardner Road is to put up some greenhouses and grow marijuana in the greenhouses. And then basically, this would be a plot of land, and you know, I said, you could put up a, you could put up that image that I sent you of the proposed outdoor area. So there, it would basically be a, and actually try the, the other one. And then scroll, yes. The, the one that was handling, yep, that one right there. So this proposed outdoor area here would basically be, just be fenced in, and that would be, you know, and have a high-security fence, cameras, everything required by the state, and it would just be field-grown, sun, you know, sun-grown, no, no structures, just behind a fence with a blind on the fence, so you couldn't see through the fence.
Okay, which is similar to what you had previously proposed. So no, no real change from the original plan?
Right, right.
And this was a, at the time, it was a maybe. Is it more than a maybe now?
Yeah, we would, so we would like to do this definitely this year. So as we've, you know, we're coming to the planning board on Thursday with our, you know, our, our full submission with the greenhouses and whatnot, but our goal for the footprint of our greenhouse is going to take a couple of years to get there. So this is, this space is, you know, we could utilize it right away. Basically, it's, it's the, the security requirements are lower, and it's just, you know, it's a, it's a fence. It's the cameras, the CCC security requirements, and we could be, you know, be up and, up and going without building structures. So it would be definitely for this coming year, this summer, not necessarily going into the future. The goal is to, you know, continue to build greenhouses back there.
Okay. Do you have any active facilities that you're managing, you specifically, now?
No.
You don't? Okay. Will this be the first one that goes online that you will be managing, or are there others that you have in the, in the sort of cooker that may start before this one?
This should be the first one, but it's not just me. I have a, you know, it's a team, there's, there's six or seven of us who are involved in this whole process. You know, members of the company, so, you know, I'm not doing this alone. We have, we have two head growers from other companies that are coming over to, to grow with us, and, you know, so yes, it'd be, it'd be my first venture in the state, yep.
Ryan, this is questions for you a little bit, Ryan. So if you want to unmute while I, while I ask it. As far as a community agreement that we're going to either have to amend or do a new one here, because I know we went through a process before. Has council already seen a draft of that as far as how restrictions may apply to this portion of, meaning the delivery portion, which is new, and the, the tax benefits, I guess, for the town on this?
So we haven't started that process. The community outreach hearing is first, but starting tomorrow, I'm assuming that Bowie and I will be working on, on getting that together, and it'll be ready for your next meeting. There are templates out there. This isn't the first. This isn't the first time this has been done in the state, and the, if people remember from previous ventures here, the HCA is just, if this happens in the town, this is the parameters for that, the host community agreement, these are the parameters. The, the permitting and following regulations is done by the CCC in the planning board through the special permit process. So these initial steps are just, if it's going to happen in Hubbard's, and here's, here's how, and then the, the actual licensing and permitting and regulations come after.
Okay, thank you. Boy, have you been getting any, any hate mail, for lack of a better way to say it, relative to, since this has been out here for a while? Any pushback from townspeople, any, any sort of, anything that we, you know, would like to know about?
You know, I've just, we've been at the site quite a bit recently, and a lot of people have been just pulling in kind of just to check it out, stay low. I haven't, I haven't received really much negative feedback at all. I've talked to a lot of people who are excited. I mean, this is going to be a, you know, this is going to be a, an exciting project. It's going to employ a lot of people and hopefully bring a lot of, you know, a lot of money to the town. And I haven't, in terms of people that I've met in town so far, and not that many, but just, you know, really that have stopped in, have all been, have all voiced support for it, so I haven't received any hate mail at all, no.
Okay, I'm just asking. Yeah, no, we, I don't think we've received much, if any, either. You know, there've been obviously questions at previous hearings and whatnot, and discussions around town, but you know, from, from the initial introduction to you guys, it hasn't gone that way, so I just have one more, I guess, and, and, you know, again, anyone can chime in whenever they want, but Ryan just talked about a specific next step after this meeting takes place, you know, per the steps that you have to take, and that would be in, in entering into an agreement with the town. After that, assuming, you know, that goes through as it had in the past, and, and after the, the planning board meeting that you talked about as well, what is, you know, everybody's going to want to know, when's this actually going to happen? What are the other steps that need to go into play before, before you guys start your operation?
Well, basically, we need the special permit approved. Our engineers are working on, you know, we have, we have one set of plans that we're proposing for just the greenhouses, and we're going to propose this one as well. This is actually a simpler plan with the outdoor. It's a little less greenhouse and more outdoor, but we would like to, you know, we can basically, as soon as the special permit is done, and we can get our building permit. I mean, we're, we're, we're good to go. Our applications are in with the CCC for the first three host community agreements that we already have from Hubbard's then, so for product manufacturing, the indoor cultivate, the indoor cultivation and the retail. And it would be really just adding this, these other, these other two to it, and sort of sending them in with the other three. But it would, it's really, the timeline is however long the special permit process is going to take. So, you know, three or four months, we're, we're breaking, we're, we're breaking ground in the spring.
Okay, anyone, before we open it up, Brian, I know there's some people asking, be a chat, is anyone else from, you know, select board, planning board, anyone have any questions they want to, they want to ask? I feel like Alice.
Hey, I would like to, to say about Thursday, this is second of everybody's knowledge. What, what has been submitted, and we haven't, our meeting Thursday is to formally accept their application for a special permit. So the only two things that that permit addresses at the moment, but again, it's time to change it, is the greenhouse and the shop. You want to add two more uses, outdoor grow and delivery. I'm going to be very consistent with what I said months ago, which is, this is one lot, and all the uses proposed for that lot should be considered at the same time, if possible. Because the public's going to be looking at not a layer cake situation. They want to be able to see the whole enterprise. Okay, so I would suggest to you that you amend that application to put those two additional components in, and with the, especially the delivery section. It's my understanding with the new delivery marijuana permit, it doesn't have to be in connection with a shop at all. It could just be a delivery facility, period. So if it's going to be sort of ancillary to the shop, and the shop being primary, we need to know that. Or are you going to hope to deploy an entire fleet of vehicles that would be sent out every day and through a whole separate business? So things like, not only your operations, hours of operation, but your number of vehicles, the quantity. You know, we need to know what that involves.
Sure, so we are, on Thursday, we will be submitting this also, a site plan with the, with the outdoor as well. So that's coming in as well. The engine, Boebrik Engineering is working on that right now. So as like, you know, as part of that. And then, and in terms of the, there are two, so there, let me just clarify, there are two types of delivery licenses that are available in the state. One is called a courier license, and one is called an unlimited delivery warehouse license. So they differ. One, the courier license has to be associated with a store. It's not a standalone license to deliver marijuana products from anyone in the state to anywhere you want. It's specific to this store, so this 56 Gardner Road store would offer this service. How big is the fleet of vehicles? We would start with four, and from there, you know, depending on demand, it really depends on the demand on the shop. So the second type of delivery license that you are speaking of, and that does exist and is offered, is the warehouse wholesale delivery license. And that's for somebody who doesn't have a storefront. So if they, all you need to do for that is basically rent a warehouse, park, have a secure place for your vehicles. You can store your marijuana someplace, interact with a third-party server who's doing your interface to the public, and then you're basically a mobile shop. So that is not what we're, what we're seeking here, where it's not, you know, we're basically just operating through the Paper Crane Cannabis store. So in terms of, if you're looking through the guidance documents on the CCC website, this one would be called the courier license. So it's really just a courier service for people who don't want to come in.
Okay, I need to have you explain all that as part of your application.
Sure.
Permit.
Okay.
And your plan should show where these vehicles are going to park, it should, the whole thing.
We have all that.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
I have a question concerning the, the delivery. Is this occurring elsewhere in the state, Bowie?
This is occurring elsewhere in the state. It's, so this is the, the model that we're going for is what the medical facilities, the medical marijuana facilities have been doing since 2013. So nobody's heard anything about, you know, any problems with this model, because it's, it's very simple. It's, it's basically a discreet vehicle delivering to your door, you know, scanning the ID and handing it off. All of the medical deliveries, I mean, all the medical dispensaries, most of them deliver. And so it's been going on in the state since 2013 or 14, and it's just now becoming available as a service for, for non-medical dispensaries.
Well, let me to follow that up, then. What are the state regs if? What are the state regs, if any, pertaining to the drivers of the delivery?
So.
They're carrying.
Okay.
Go ahead.
There's, so the, the, the car is equipped with GPS monitoring and a dashboard cam. It has a safe storage area in the vehicle. It's limited to a certain amount of product to transport at one time. And, um, it's, it, they've had zero, they have never had in the state any problems with the model. Which is why it's, you know, they're, they're really just extending it as a, as an option for stores to do it. Without going about setting up a warehouse somewhere. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's home delivery. Liquor stores do it. It's, it's, it's not complicated. It's pretty, it's, it's just basic. It's just new. They actually approved the draft regulations today. So this is just being rolled out now in the state.
Is there any age requirement in terms of the drivers or is just if you have a mass license, you could actually then deliver marijuana to people?
No, so you have to be a registered marijuana agent, so even if you wanna, if you wanna work in the dispensary, if you wanna work in, in this industry at all. You go through about a two week on ramping process to become a registered marijuana agent in whatever field you're working in. These drivers are just another registered marijuana agent.
Bowie, I have a question. Are these drivers a third party operation or are they employees of yours?
Um, this would be a, a, an, an actual third party company of ours. So it was, it's, it's on the property there, but they're, they're our employees, so this would be under paper crane.
Okay.
Can I expand on that? Uh, this is from Swish Tiger. Are these individuals therefore considered to be? Part of your entity or subsidiary of your entity?
Oh, yes, they are.
Okay, and is that, is that your plan of record? Not only for the present, but also for the future, so therefore any changes to this plan where you are starting to engage with a third party that is not. As you have described here, uh, i- is that, is this a transitory, uh, arrangement that you're making? Or is this something that, uh, you are planning on keeping as, and this is what you're presenting to the board?
Uh, we are planning on keeping this and presenting it to the board and, you know, this is, uh, you, there's nothing, there, there. There's only a few third party businesses, like ancillary businesses in cannabis. And this is not it. This is just home delivery courier service. Leaving from fifty-six Gardner Road, only delivering products from this store only. And they're registered agents to the business, which is, you know, which is on fifty-six Gardner Road.
Understood. I do have some additional questions if I may, uh, unless, uh, you, you, you wanted to expand on that even further. Uh, so there's, there's in your drawing, uh, if I can just ask you to go to your own drawing here, there's, uh. On the bottom left-hand side, under the proposed outdoor area, you have three dots there. Explain what those are.
Those are trees.
Oh, okay, wonderful, thank you.
Those are trees.
That's fine, I just didn't know if these were like, been, something like that, that was actually being proposed here. And it was not clear to me from that perspective. The next question I have is, uh, in your. In your, um. In, 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 in your. The plan, uh, plan for how the marijuana establishment will possibly impact the community, really. We will be getting into an agreement with Hubbardston to pay tax percentage of our sales. I'm not, man, what do you mean exactly by a percentage of your sales? Isn't, isn't it, uh, uh, under a hundred percent of all your sales for, for marijuana?
Oh, of course, it is, so sorry.
I'm trying to understand why you, why you indicate that it is a percentage of your sales.
It's, it's a, it's a percentage of total sales, sorry.
Okay, so you, what, what you're saying is, is you will pay a percentage on the total sales. It's not a, it's not a payment on a percentage of what you're selling, right?
Exactly, you, there, it is a, it is a percentage on total, on all sales, total sales.
I thought, I do re, I do recommend that you make sure that that gets very clearly stated because I think that as citizens of the town, that is the expectations.
Definitely, um, if I, if I misstated that, um, it's, it's definitely.
From a technical perspective, I also have a question number two. In your presentation, you indicated that these were courier services or courier. In your website where you indicate it's a limited delivery. I'm trying to understand what the difference is between the two because you obviously have written something on your website.
I will, can you hear me? Sorry, you, you, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, you know, Francois, that was breaking up a little bit. I understand what you're saying, so. Here's why it says something different than what it says on my website. The limited delivery license was renamed the courier license at the CCC hearing today where they voted on these regulations. So they've been calling the two licenses up until now. The limited delivery license, which is the courier model, so that's the service that operates with one store. Or the wholesale delivery license to differentiate between them. The CCC has been calling them the limited delivery license and the delivery and the wholesale warehouse delivery license. Today in the regulations, they finalized the language and that was confusing to people, so they're calling the limited delivery license, the courier model now.
Got you, alright, so.
Alright, hey, so I'm, I'm gonna jump in real quick. Francois, did you wanna say one more thing there? Cause I, I am gonna jump in for a sec.
No, I, I just, I, again, I just want to make sure that you are clearly stating that in your, at least on your website. Because I do believe that a lot of people are using your website as a guide, uh, to review this here. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, just for a sec, we're gonna peel away from the panelists. We'll, we'll come back to us, um, if anything else, uh, we have now or wanna pop in our head. But we do have some excellent questions from, from the public and, and that's why they're all here, so, um, we're gonna go through them. Ryan, I'll, I'll read them, um, okay? So it sounds good, so I've got them. I'm just gonna go in order, the way we receive them. Um, Ryan, if you could unmute though too, cause not, I don't think all of these are for Bowie. Some of them are, are operational that, that I, I'd just like you to be able to chime in. Um, but, uh, you know, a number of them are for Bowie, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start here. You ready, Bowie?
Sure.
Okay, uh, in terms of health and safety, uh, this is from, from Kate Sob. Uh, in, in terms of health and safety, what kind of pesticides, nutrients and other chemicals are planned for use? And what will be your plan for use and disposal of these items?
Alright, I'll take them one at a time. So pesticides, nothing is allowed. You can't even spray neem on these plants, so they set the bar pretty high in terms of, uh, what you can, you know, what you can spray these. Use on these plants. Um, I'm not the, uh, you know, I'm not the head grower. All the, all the, everything that's allowed is laid out in the regulations. You know, you have lots of onsite inspections, unannounced inspections by the CCC. They're constantly coming in, checking on. What you're using, so on and so forth. Um, in terms of nutrients, this would be all organic, um, so, you know, nothing heavy at all. I mean, basically it would be, uh, look, mostly locally available organic compost, um, you know, in-ground. Uh, or, or. Whatever we can find locally is the number one thing that we're gonna try and use. But, you know, we're not, this outdoor thing would not be, we'd not be growing in, in cocoa or, and soaking it with hydroponic. Fertigation solution. It would basically just be sun and soil and water.
Okay, and then, um, so does that answer the question of the plan, uh, for use and disposal of these items because they're not regulated?
So for the use and disposal of the, of, you know, the parts of the plant. You, they, you buy these big grinders and you grind them up and, um, you mix them with a byproduct and you ship it out. And you pay to have it disposed of.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, I'm gonna move on. We do have a bunch, so I, I am gonna try to move through them. Um, eventually, this is from, from Clem. Eventually, I think I heard that you will have, uh, a retail space. Will you then have an onsite lab for extraction?
Uh, yeah, I mean, lab is an interesting word. So, uh, we have a host community agreement from Hubbardston pro, currently for product manufacturing and we're just gonna be making, uh. Very like low impact hash extraction, so no volatile compounds. It's basically just an ice water bath. And, um, really cold temperatures and a deep freezer. And, um, and presses, so no lab, we're not doing a closed CO2 rig or one of those big crazy butane rigs. Not interested in that at all and, uh. Yeah, that's, um, we will have that, yes, we're, and, and we have an agreement for it already.
Okay. Uh, it's from Tom, uh, when the town approved the bylaw, the delivery service was not part of the bylaw. The question, does the bylaw has to be amended to allow this type of business?
Um, well, all marijuana businesses are allowed under the bylaw, so that it's currently allowed.
Okay. I'll ju, I'll jump in there, Dan. The, um, as part of the host community agreement process, we do review things with our legal counsel. We do occasionally get folks who, who ask about holding these hearings and engaging in marijuana business in town that, that disappear, right? And aren't present like Bowie is right now. So it's our general policy not to engage with council until we have something to engage with. So as soon as this, this hearing is done and we have something to work with, we will jump in. In case folks are wondering why we haven't talked to council yet, it's just to, uh, to make sure that we have a serious application on our hands.
Okay, um, next one is from Jamie Lee. Hi, is this marijuana plant a done deal for Hubbardston? And do we feel that this will change the spirit of our hometown community? Ryan, why don't you, why don't you talk to, about the done deal part first and we can talk about the other part after?
So what has been accepted so far is a host community agreement with, um, with this company and organization for the uses that are allowed by our. By our bylaws and, and were passed by the bylaws or, or any state laws that apply here. So that, folks are allowed to apply for that. The next step is the special permit process, which the planning board will run. And they have a specific process that needs to go through. The state also needs to license and permit and regulate the industry. So there are several hurdles, but in terms of, in terms of the Hubbardston side, besides the special permit process. Our part was done when the bylaw was passed and is now going through the process that was laid out. In terms of the spirit of the hometown community, uh, that, that's a question for, for residents and, and the board.
I'll just say to that, you know, the, it's. It will change the spirit as anything would change the spirit, so it's gonna be new. Um, and I think because it's, this is not something that we're injecting into the community. It's something the community has voted on that. As far as being a yes community to start, as far as marijuana in the first place, over the last several years. So I guess, you know, my answer is, um, eventually, you know, you know, I, I think, yes, it'll be a change to start, but I don't, I don't, I think it's gonna just. Uh, if it were something everyone were against and it was just somehow it was being forced through, then, then that's a whole different story. But that's just not the tone of how it's been over the last few years, being part of it, so that's just my, my two cents there. Um, next one is from, is from Damon Schmidt, who, uh, is, uh, is the right word, partner, Bowie?
Yes.
Okay, so it's from Damon Schmidt, who's a partner in this, uh, who has, has come before us in the past. It's a statement, uh, Hubbardston will be getting tax revenue from delivery sales happening in other towns. As the sale will happen in Hubbardston via the retail store. So I think that's just answering a, a previous question. Is that right, Bowie? Okay. Uh, this is from Kate again, um, what are your drying processes and how do you test for and prevent mold and/or mitigate mold if formed during the plant drying and curing process?
Uh, well, it depends on what you're drying for, so if you're just drying, if you're drying the flower to actually sell the flower. Um, that's a longer drying process. We have, uh, two drying spaces proposed in our special permit, uh, proposal that we're submitting. So that's about anywhere from a ten to a twenty-one day, um, drying of the actual plant that stripped of fan leaves. Um, you know, it's hung in a room, usually in multiple tiers. And they are dried at various levels of dehumidification over that twenty-one days. Until you reach the moisture level that you want, in which case the rest of the plant is processed. If you're processing the plant for extractions only. Um, there's a few different ways to do that, but the most popular way is you take the plant directly out of the field. You bucket down, which means you strip the flowers off the branches and you flash freeze them to about thirty below. In a medical grade freezer and then, once they're, everything is frozen, you actually take them at that temperature. And then process them into your different hash and extracts. So, uh, drying and curing, it depends on what the finished product is gonna be. For the flower that you're drying and curing, some of it is not dried and cured at all. It's just frozen and then, um, processed. But, uh, you know, top shelf flower is usually a longer drying process. And, um, in terms of, uh, how do you test for and prevent mold and/or mitigate mold that form during the plant? So everything is tested in the state of Massachusetts by independent testing laboratories. So there's just something that everybody should know that you can't have, you can't own and operate any other marijuana businesses in the state. If you even have any stake in a testing lab, so they don't let you like double dip in, in that. Uh, fashion at all. So right now there's Pro Verity Labs, CDX Labs and MCR Labs are the three main labs that are testing marijuana. You test it after it's harvested and, um, depending on what you're gonna do with it, the testing guidelines vary depending on how it's gonna be processed. So if you're testing, everything is tested in ten pound batches. You take a ten pound batch of your flower that is gonna be sold, um, and that goes off and it's tested. And then it comes back and that's our secure cure courier. That is a third party usually that is, uh, operating that. There's a bunch of those in the state. Those are, that's tested and comes back with a certain, has to test for a certain, um, test out as acceptable flower. And then other things that are being processed, um, the testing standards are just different. It's not like, you know, if, if it's gonna be processed, um, in terms of, you know, mold and all that stuff. Uh, it just gets into, you know, levels. You don't want any mold or anything on any of the flower. It turns into trash if it's moldy. Unless it's being processed and a lot of the different processes you can, um. You can still process things that, uh, have some sort of biomass or residue left behind because they're being processed and refined. If that makes any sense.
Okay. This is from Kate again, uh, with the current plan, uh, or future plans for greenhouses. Will there be use of carbon dioxide and or carbon monoxide? And what type of indoor air quality mitigation will you have in place to protect your employees? And will any other gases not stated above be used?
Uh, right now, we're not planning on using anything. We're not, we're not adding carbon dioxide.
Okay, or monoxide?
Or monoxide, no.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so we have, uh, nine or ten from, from someone who's, whose name is Suzie. So Suzie, I know you're listening clearly, um, as we would do this as if we were in person. Um, uh, as chair, I wouldn't give you the opportunity to ask this many questions in a row, so. We'll, we'll, I'll, I'll ask a couple now and then I'm gonna bounce around to some other, uh, questions that others have. And then bounce back and, and we do have a, a full agenda this, this evening. So as we would normally do if we were all packed into the sleigh building and teaming into the senior center, which is what this, this sort of a meeting would be. Uh, it's gonna be conducted, um, similar to that, um, for, uh, making sure everybody has their voice heard. But, um, not, uh, dominating and, and, uh, in any way, so, um, I'm gonna to just go in order here and this is from Suzie. Can more information be sent out to the people in town? I am concerned that COVID may be limiting the ability of some of the townspeople who would be against this proposal to know about this and then be able to respond. Ryan, you wanna start?
I can say that we are, we are trying to get information out through our, through our normal channels, so we are. Sending it via email subscription if people sign up, uh, putting it on the town website. We have a pretty robust social media presence on Facebook and, and Twitter. Uh, but this, this is a common, common issue for all of our, all of our town business, um, not even. Uh but this, this is a common, common issue for all of our, all of our town business, um not even during COVID, but definitely exacerbated by COVID. Uh trying to find ways to to get information to folks. So if people have suggestions or or ways to improve it, we're we're certainly listening, but we do push it out through all those mediums as quickly as possible.
And you know, I I always, my initial answer um for questions similar to this or or discussion points like this um wants to be, while we've been talking about it for a year and a half, that's not what I'm gonna say. Because look, I can say that because I'm on the select board and I've been here for nine years, so I'm involved, right? So I know, but I know everybody doesn't know, and I know it's new to people, right? So we're not gonna um insult you by saying, well, you should have paid attention. That's, that's not what we're gonna do, that's not the way we work, and it's not the way we're ever gonna, you know, start start to work. But do know um that, you know, you've put your trust in us um to to be present during this process that we've asked every question we could think of and sent it to every party um to make sure it's being done correctly. Um if it is so chosen by the town to proceed, which it has to this point. So I just wanna say that out loud. Um so, okay, so so moving on, another question here from from Suzie um is there, there was a huge turnout for the other proposal. We had a lot of people against this for the last one. Um uh and then what about security? This is me a couple Bowie here, I know you can read them too, but what about, I'm just gonna finish this, the question. Growing the plants takes a lot of water, will this affect neighboring water supplies? So probably start with the the security and then the water.
Okay, well, in terms of security, this would be um it's just be in compliance with what the state requires to operate marijuana establishment. So it's gonna be a fence, cameras, a lot of motion detectors and a viewable video feed, um twenty-four hour video feed um should be i- as secure as every other marijuana business in the state. And there's uh, there's quite a few of them at this point. Um so we're working with the company called Johnson Controls is doing our security plan for all of our buildings and and the entire site. So um you know, that's an extensive part of this build out and it's the, you know, one of the extensive parts of licensing through the state. So obviously, um maybe you haven't been to any of a dispensary, but you know, security is very tight. Um you should go in one door, out another door, your ID is checked a couple of times. Um I'm talking, of course, about a retail situation, but um you know, security is the number one concern for the state. And um it's uh, it's one of the things that they have the most oversight on. So uh that's, I think the best I can answer that for now. Um and in terms of water, uh this is not, water wise, their demand is not very high. So we would be um in the ballpark of, you know, less than five thousand gallons a day. But it also depends on the phasing of um how our project, you know, is built out, how we roll it out. So outdoor, uh you know, outdoor marijuana requirements are different than indoor marijuana requirements, you know, than what's gonna be in the greenhouse. Um marijuana is not a very demanding plant. Um contri, you know, contrary to prior, what people believe, it's actually, you know, it's mainly uh come from dry regions in the, on the planet. Um so we've already, like our engineers at Bow Brick Engineering are, you know, we're doing obviously this, the the water supply that we're gonna be operating with our, just our wells, um our our one well on the property as of now. And um from what we've come up with with usage and uh we haven't dug our test well yet, but from what is in the general area, um we don't need a high demand well for this at all.
Okay, I'm going to uh uh ask a couple of questions uh that are not from Suzie first and and go back uh for for maybe a couple more. Uh so this is from Tom, um what about uh, you know, I I can imagine, which Tom? What about smell with outdoor growing? Are my cows gonna get high?
Um no, you don't get high from the smell, get high when the, when the flower or the or the distillate is combusted and then the vapor is released. Um no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I mean, it's, it's allowed, there, there is gonna be some smell in the later part of the outdoor growing season. Um people are under the misconception that, you know, marijuana plants smell from eight inches until they're harvested. They actually don't really smell at all until the last four to six weeks of flowering is when they smell. Um until then, you probably wouldn't notice them at all. So um I think people are always very concerned about the smell, um that's the main concern. And I am not, uh I think everyone will be surprised that, number one, there's gonna be uh marijuana being grown in all these communities around. Number two, there's gonna be a lot of hemp grown as well, which smells the same. So um you know, legal uh just regular hemp, not marijuana. And that's uh, that's, that's really um my answer for that is it's allowed. The smell is a byproduct of late stage flowering. Until then, it's not a huge factor.
Okay, I I guess I would just say that the point of us coming um and and having you have this this forum to be able to do this is good or bad, we don't wanna be surprised.
Yeah.
Right? So I know you, I'm not trying to just parse your words there by any means, but still, that's, that's why, you know, that, that, that's a good surprise, I guess, is what I would call it. But we don't want bad surprises either. So all these questions are gonna be asked for those reasons is that we, we wanna feel like, you know, we've, we've spoken to somebody who knows, not that who's open, you know?
But that's, that's just something to keep in mind is that, is that, you know, when marijuana vegetative state before it's, it's through its flowering cycle, it's not a very smelly plant at all.
Okay. All right, this is from Clem, uh what is your long term plan as to staying in town?
Uh my plan is to stay here and and do this business for the rest of my life. That's my plan.
And how long do you think you'll live now? Um, okay, um I'm gonna move on to, this is Gordon uh Savigny, uh if I said that right. Says mailings would help exclamation point. Not everyone is connected through emails or checking out your website, and I would not have known about this meeting if someone didn't tell me. It's kind of sneaky, honestly. People are against this and it will affect our community negatively. We can't even have a drive through Dunkin's, why are we going to allow this business? It is going to cause so much in and out of traffic and parking on sixty-eight. And where are you getting the water that will affect our water supplies as we have wells? So uh there's some question uh portions of that, if you wanna just, you know, you you've already sort of stated some of it. But if you wanna address some of that as you see fit there, Bowie?
Uh sure, just going back to the water, um anything that we can't, um that's, I guess, w- we will deem, you know, extremely high demand. We can also just buy and ship it in. So I'm not opposed to bringing in tankers full of water. Um again, our usage is not gonna be, um it's, we're, this is not hydroponic. I'm not, this isn't gonna be a hydroponic farm, so a lot of people are concerned about the water usage because of hydroponics and aquaculture, which is um using massive amounts of nutrient solution sloshing into uh basically small pots with huge marijuana plants where the water is drained down and then um recaptured and then mixed again and so on and so forth. So we're going for just, you know, for the outdoor, it would literally be just like any other farm um in town, any, any other vegetable farm. We would just be watering with simple eighth inch tree rings off of um, you know, a larger irrigation line. And again, um watering is phased throughout the season, so sometimes they're a little thirstier than others. Um I guess that's my answer for that in terms of um mailings would help. Uh we mailed our notices to the Butters. If you wanna give us your, or give Ryan your address and have him pass it to me, I will make sure that any future stuff uh you will be mailed directly, if that will make it easier for you. And any that goes for anybody else as well.
Okay, um and then uh this is from Jamie Lee, where uh I'll start the answer to this, but wh- where on sixty-eight is this going, near the playground, near where kids might be walking to school? So, so this is is going um back where the old stove shop was, correct?
Yes.
So that's further, further towards Gardner uh away from the the Curtis Recreational Fields um uh and and past uh where the Hubbardson Pizza Palace Plaza is.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so I'm just answering the question, if anyone wants to uh add to that, I think I was just literally answering the question there. Um, okay, so uh I'm gonna go up right now uh to back up to where I left off with Suzie. But again, there's a bunch of other Suzie questions and a couple of other comments. Um you know, Ryan, I know this is sort of new ground for us uh as far as um how we post this information later. I know we're recording this and then all of the items on the chat will be able to be accessed by other people because there are a number of statements here too that are, are things that people want others to see, which, which I is absolutely fine and and the way things should be. But we'll, we'll be able to have those available for people to see along with the recording, correct?
Yep, so just want, just want folks to understand that the community outreach hearing is Bowie's chance to answer questions from the community. There are no decisions to be made, and this is his meeting that we're facilitating for him. So this is information, questions and feedback for for Bowie as he he enters the community for for whatever business he's doing. In terms of the chat, I just saved the chat just in case we get loss of power. I'll be saving it again at the end and putting up a document that has the entire chat on our town website and linking it to this video. So that folks can see the video and see the chat, because while you're watching the video, you you can't see the chat. So I would suggest uh reading through, reading through the chat so people can understand what was said like you would at a public hearing. But we will post to include all the comments and questions on the town's website. And then briefly to address the, the technology questions in here that that were directed more towards the town. Um and some of the mailing questions, the the mailing questions is really a budget question. So it costs anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars to mail the entire town. And uh we do a lot of business in the town and some people are interested in in certain topics and some people aren't. So it comes down to finances in terms of, in terms of mailings. We can also post things a- around town if people wanna do that. So we're certainly open to suggestions, but but that truly is a, a budget decision. Technology is cheaper and free, which is why we tend to lean on it. And I do agree that it doesn't reach everybody and and there is no perfect solution. Um I I didn't mean to suggest that technology is the only way to get information. It's just in this environment with restrictions in place and budget constraints we have in town. Um we pride ourselves in our ability to push information as 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 best as possible, but we know it's not perfect.
Okay, thanks for that. I'm now, I'm now gonna read, you know, six or seven of these, uh which I think are statements. I've I've gone through them a number of times, um not picking through on ones I like or don't like. I'm just trying not to repeat similar type questions. So uh this, this is, I'm, I'm gonna read a few of them because these are, these are things people wanted others to hear. Uh from Suzie, all other plants do not use the amount of water that marijuana uses. From Tom, one million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons per year, that is a lot of water. I will have to trust Tom's calc's on, I think, probably using your five thousand gallon a day um uh times the amount of days in a year is my guess. From Clem, uh any idea how much revenue you will create for the town in the form of tax revenue? Uh whi- which we've discussed, you know, a number of times in the past, but but Ryan, do you, you have a quick answer to this so I can, I can get through these?
We've agreed previous, in previous HCA's on a three percent community impact fee, which means um anything that's produced, we would get three percent of it in terms of sales, uh which it really depends on the volume of sales that come through. Um this expires after a certain amount of time where we have to demonstrate that there is an impact to the community for that uh income stream to continue. So for now, we'd be looking at five years of that in the um, I'm sorry, Bowie, did we do three or five? I forget. Five.
Five.
So five to start, and then on any retail sales from a storefront, we would get an additional three percent sales tax. So um it could be a significant amount of of one-time revenue for the town. But that's always a balance of making sure the town is protected, making sure we're following what people want us to do in terms of bringing business into town. And then, of course, the revenue which can be used for various municipal purposes.
And it's safe to say this is, this is hundreds of thousands of dollars. Correct, just trying to scale it.
Yeah, yes. And just going back to the um, just going back to the water question for a moment here. Um I know before you need to get a waiver from the um, from the state, you're allowed actually ninety-nine thousand gallons per day. So you're almost, you're out allowed almost a hundred, I mean, we don't wanna come anywhere near that. So I mean, sustainability is a huge um thing that we, you know, wanna adhere to. And um but you know, so we're way, way below the threshold where we would even be concerned for water usage, number one. I mean, number two, and we're also in our engineering for our uh plans, we're catching all the water on the roof. It's coming off all these buildings is being caught and stored. And you know, this, the, that's a, that's a major part of this is um store, water storage, catching everything that comes. And then um whatever, you know, if for some reason our usage uh became extravagant, which it should not. And this is not a hydroponic facility. Um we could always just buy water and ship it in. We don't wanna drain anybody's aquifers or anything else.
Okay, um and next one will be, I'm just reading this, Ryan, can you please organize a list from Suzie? Ryan, can you please organize a letter and write to everyone in the town so that everyone who doesn't have access to technology will be able to see this, not just the website? Um, go ahead, Ryan, if you wanna speak to that.
Um I I don't mind doing that. Normally, the way we would do that is send a postcard to folks uh pointing them to the website to look at this specifically. And um I know this is a, an item of concern for many people and and it's a a focus area, and that's good. We want people to participate. Others, it's not a focus point, so it's a balance of cost. And um you know, with any business that comes into town, there's always the, the balance of, do you mail things out or do you mail, do not mail things out? So I'd be looking for certainly uh board support if they wanted to send that. And I don't know if Bowie'd be willing to um to have us draft a letter, to send people to the website so that they can see to to calm some of these concerns or help us share information during COVID.
Yeah, of cour- of course, of course.
Okay, the next two comments are are relative to that, kind of. Uh it was from Jamie Lee, the first one, why wouldn't Bowie pay for the mailings? And then Suzie follows up with Bowie Bertold should pay for this. So uh those are the opinions of them uh on that. Um and then uh John Day uh asked, um with this business coming into town, will this help with homeowner property tax? Um I know how I can answer that. I guess the best way to answer it is, i- i- Ryan, add to this if you'd like, but but specifically reducing homeowner pocket property taxes? No, because it doesn't work like that. However, um additional revenue for s- from sources like this, which are sources we didn't previously have, um reduce how much we need to ask in addition to what we'd ask normally through the legally set property taxes. So uh it allows us uh to provide normal uh services in town in ways that don't require us asking for more money uh from the townspeople. So is that a fair way to answer that, Ryan?
Yeah, so it might not directly defer people's taxes, but it certainly does reduce the demand for increased taxes if the towns, um if the townsfolk wanna vote for, for certain additional measures that we need to fix some problems. So I I think that's a good way to put it.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna step off the the uh the questions from 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 the public for a moment. Does, does anyone uh who is a panelist um wanna ask any questions uh that that's come to them? Okay, no, I'm seeing none. Um Bowie, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um no, I look forward to getting the rest of the submission to you guys on Thursday.
Okay, well, I I think we're gonna, we're gonna end it there. This doesn't end uh the process by any means. I think we've, we've made that pretty clear and it will be rekindled very soon at the next planning board meeting where the public is um able to join in um as Alice sees fit. So um uh you know, thanks Bowie for coming um uh again, and and I'm sure we're gonna have many more questions for you along the way. Um Ryan, do you have anything to to close us with here?
Uh just that, w- we're always trying to Uh, just that, w- we're always trying to listen to the concerns, so I'm gonna work with Bowie this week to not only continue the process in the best interest of protecting the town, but also to get a copy of this hearing in everybody's mailbox so that they can, um, review it and provide input as needed. Um, and I, I think that's what we would do for any business or any concern in town, and I think it's a good first step.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we are complete with that item for tonight.
Thanks Bowie.
Thank you.
But I gotta kick Bowie out here. Oh, he kicked himself out.
All right, well, we're, we're, um, we're on, uh, onto the next item, which is, which is item four B, which is, is another planning board, uh, joint uh, item of discussion. And what that is, is the planning board, uh, joint meeting for appointment of a new member for which we have two candidates. Uh, Ryan, could you, uh, present the names of those candidates for us?
Yes. Sorry, just got a thousand things open.
And, and, and as you do, sorry, as you do that, and the process for which uh, each of our boards needs to go through to decide whether to proceed with one or not tonight.
All right, so we've done this before, um, but for those watching, we have a planning board vacancy, a member, elected member uh, resigned and we've had this vacancy for a while. We've advertised a couple of times. And in this round, we got two interested qualified candidates. And those two folks are Peter Jeffs and Christopher Monroe, both residents who submitted a letter of interest that I circulated to these boards and, um, in one case, a resume. Or, or an email detailing qualifications. So this appointment would be a joint venture between the planning board and the board of selectmen. So all remaining planning board members plus board of selectmen vote on a candidate. This candidate would fill this seat until the next town election. So you're, you're looking at about seven months, six to seven months at this point. And then if that person wanted to continue, they would need to run for the seat. So this is an appointment to fill an open slot until the next town election.
And our boards need to vote, uh, to agree on the same, uh, candidate separately?
Uh, so that's, that's the, um, the associate member, the, the planning board mem- which has different rules and, and comes up from time to time. This is a joint vote, so majority vote rules here. Between all select board members present and all planning board members present.
Okay, so just so we're clear, we have all five select board members here. And there are one, two, three uh, members of the planning board, so that would be eight. So a vote of five affirmative to one of the candidates would be required at a minimum to pass, um, uh, uh, to pass. Okay, uh, well, Alice, this is, um, you know, affecting you, you more than us, right? So you, you wanna, uh, I don't know, I'm just gonna sort of open it up to you here. I'm, I'm, I'm assuming you guys have received the, the emails uh, and information on, uh, both candidates?
We have, at least I, I have. The rest of my board, I didn't get to talk to today, but I believe they did. Um, are the candidates here? Do they want to say anything to us?
They are not here. So both expressed interest in joining the board and sending a letter uh, just to volunteer. So probably weren't tracking maybe a, a job interview or application process. So looking to see if, if the board does wanna schedule them in the future. Uh, we could do that, um, or vote on qualifications, whatever you wanna do, we're, we're happy to facilitate.
Well, I think there was a fair amount of detail, uh, presented for both candidates. They both think have their, um, you know, their strengths, um. I'd like everybody to have a chance to on our two boards to, to say something. Unless you object, Dan.
No, that sounds great. Um, so, uh, uh, anybody can start here if, if anyone does have anything to say, um, um, you know, including, including you, uh, Alice, uh, if you wanna lead us off or, or not. So anyone have any, um, any opinions and, and clearly, um, uh, since we would, if a motion were made, get into a discussion phase of this as well. Um, that's also on the table is a motion, uh, if, if, if somebody so chose. So anyway, um, just sort of opening it up there.
Alice, Bill Homans, uh, do we need a motion to start here or do we just, just start discussing?
We can discuss if you want, or, or that's what I just said. So, so we, somebody wants to make a motion, I, I'm not gonna stop them.
I make a motion, Bill Holmes. I make a motion for the planning board to appoint Christopher Monroe to the planning board.
We would need a second to that and then we can have discussion, right?
This, Francis Steiger, I would second this here.
Okay, it's seconded, uh, we're at discussion. Um, would anyone like to discuss this?
I'd like to hear maybe from, uh, from the motioner and the seconder, um, their, their thinking on this.
This is Francois Steiger quickly. Uh, I looked at the resume of the individual who, uh, uh, of both individuals basically who presented themselves. One was obviously a resume, the other one was a letter of interest. I have to say both candidates, I'm very pleased to find that we have two candidates. It's, it's great to know that we have in, in, uh, interested individuals, uh, who, who want to come and, and, and serve on this board. This is a volunteer position. It is sometimes, uh, very time consuming, but at the same time, it can be very rewarding. From my perspective, one of the things that does attract me very much on Christopher Monroe's resume is the fact that not only does he have a legal background, but he also has a background in the area where he has worked. Pardon me, he has worked, um, uh, in, in outreach and pro bono, uh, programs. Uh, something which I think, uh, can be very beneficial, especially when we look at some of the work that we have been undertaking, uh, as of more recently, such as, for example, uh, the, the affordable housing, uh, component. Uh, I know that Alice has, uh, put for- uh, forth quite a lot of effort and her legal understanding and expertise has been instrumental. And having somebody who has that background has been extremely helpful for us. And so from my perspective, I look at this here as a person who has had a, a, a very, very broad background. Uh, and, and, and adds to this here also again, a legal perspective, which is again, for the work that we're doing, especially when we're looking at bylaws. Um, uh, as a very beneficial, uh, additional item to have. Not to exclude what, 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 what the other candidate is presenting, because I do believe that the, this candidate also has some strong uh, uh, knowledge and, and, and background. But I do personally feel like, uh, uh, Mr. Monroe does have the qualifications that I personally have, maybe a bit more of a preference for.
Thank you. Um.
Thank you Francois, Bill Holman's here. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
We could.
Yep.
I think we've lost Bill.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Yep.
Uh, sorry, um, my, m- my biggest, uh, input on this is I'd like to see new people get involved. And I've had a lot of people tell me that they've thought about applying, but they didn't think they have an opportunity or a chance to get into a board because they were new to town and they didn't know anybody. And I think this would be a great opportunity for someone with another legal background as Alice has, which has been bene- very beneficial, as Francois had stated. So I think it'd be a great opportunity for the board to get another legal opinion.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, um, Alice, do you mind if I say something?
Sure.
So, um, you know, I, I agree, two strong candidates. I mean, I think we're lucky, um, without a doubt to, to have that. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I, I I see the support from the board that this member, uh, is going to be part of, uh, as we s- sit here tonight and um, uh, you know, I, I, I think that, um, that's an extremely important piece of this is, is to have, um, I mean, not, never gonna have unanimous, um, uh, support on all uh, items of something probably, but, um, it feels like, um, feels like there is, there is some, some pretty strong support for, for one of the candidates here. And, and I do agree with, with what I've heard from from both Francois and Bill on, on their points of, of, um, you know, the background as well as, um, yeah. Uh, you know, new members and new blood in town, a- after being on boards for getting close to a decade now total myself, so it is, it is, um, it's important for, for, for getting getting new voices and things. So, um, that was just my two cents.
Great. Maybe we're ready to vote. I don't know.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'll move the question.
Sounds good. So we'll move to a vote. Uh, this'll be roll call. I'll do it. Alice, is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, start with me. Uh, th- this is, uh, this motion is, uh, just to, to remind everybody, 'cause we did have a fair amount of discussion is to, to nominate, um, a motion for Christopher Monroe as the, uh, uh, planning board member, um, and that was seconded, uh, by Bill Holmans from a motion from Francois Steiger following discussion. So again, roll call vote, uh, this will be Dan, uh, yes, um, or I, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Francois?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Um, thanks, everybody. I think we, we, um, you know, gave it, gave it the thorough review it deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, and we've got one more item there, uh, whi- which is item four B, which is the status of bylaw revisions and updates from town meeting.
Okay, um, the way, the main, uh, bylaw that was feedback, uh, that was on the agenda for this spring and then taken off on the hopes that we'd somehow be able to have a public hearing on it, which, um, which we're gonna have to do virtually, is the signed by law. Um, and I think we would like to put it again on the spring and we will just have to, to just put it on our agenda and get a public hearing on it. Um, we're also, um, discussed with you at a meeting we had, uh, before the whole COVID situation. Um, amendments to our existing solar bylaw, which would include better, uh, sightline studies, a larger minimum uh, size for a solar field and bigger setbacks. We need to follow up on that discussion. We haven't done, done much with it. I think though the, at the my committee would like to do that, so I will report back to you, um, after I meet with them. And then the third thing that we've been that has come up since then, as you know, there was a solar field that added battery storage. Um, which we allowed as an amendment to their uh, existing special permit. But it's come to our attention that battery storage, first of all, it doesn't have to be in conjunction with a solar field. But even if it is, it deserves more t- attention and more study than it got. Um, because it does represent, uh, yeah, it does represent some risk. These are, you know, semi truck cement sized cement building stuffed with lithium batteries. Um, fortunately, we had Borrego was the petitioner who seems to be a very conscientious provider, but we should have a bylaw that governs energy storage. If we're gonna allow it in town, it shouldn't be just an amendment to an existing permit without any guidelines. Um, the trouble is that I haven't been able to locate a Massachusetts template for that bylaw. And I don't think it's the kind of thing you wanna pay town council to invent. Um, we have found, I'm, I may not be looking in the right places. This is a study we're undergoing. Um, I do have one from New York. The state of New York has put one out for local communities to study. So my hope would be I could get something back to you on that in town, in time for the town meeting as well.
Alice, did you, um, did you look into Worcester?
Um, is an ordinance? Do they have?
We built one. A, a battery storage facility or contributed to the, the construction of a battery storage facility in Worcester. Um, and I, I, we didn't have to deal with any permitting or any portions of it, but I, I don't know if, if just, if there was any sort of city ordinance or, or something, uh, there might be.
I will look into it. I'm looking for, for guidance. We could put one together based on the New York one. I would have to the problem is that none of us have that electric knowledge to say what the difference between a this megavolt and that megavolt, you know what I mean? So you do need some kind of guidance on that, but I will look, I will look, I didn't look through ordinances, um. I was given, the people at Borrego offered their expertise on these two from these two, um, you know, electrical engineers that were working on the project. So I just need a good starting point and to have a little time to do it, you know?
Yeah, I think I'm actually, I'm gonna be able to help, 'cause I, I, there was an engineer involved in the one I was on. So I'm, I'm gonna send you what I've got on that just from a couple of years ago, and then maybe it gives a place to start.
That would be great. And if you guys also have thoughts on whether you would like to, what you, how you would consider an independent energy storage facility? Apparently are being cited now that are not like in the middle of a solar field.
Um, right, if I may, Alice, uh, this is Francois. Uh, this is something that, uh, I broached with, uh, a number of individuals, uh, because I have worked in the, in the, in the energy business in the past. And it's my understanding that there is a very big push uh, because of the fact that renewable energy is not a, a, a constant, uh, supplier of, of electricity. To be able to garner that, uh, power and be able to distribute it at the times when it's actually needed. Uh, I do understand that our largest utilities here in the states, both EverSource as well as National Grid are actively looking at this here because there is an individual, there is, uh, there are problems when it comes to balancing that grid. And, uh, it's not just something that we're looking, or there's being looked at here in the state of Massachusetts, but actually it's being looked at nationwide. Uh, I, I, I do believe that there is a need, uh, potentially, uh, in this state. Uh, as a matter of fact, we had, uh, Bill, uh, Murray, uh, in one of our meetings and he had some understanding and knowledge about this here. And one of the things he said, it would be a very progressive way for us to potentially generate additional revenues for our town. And one that, uh, would be certainly of interest, especially if it's done correctly and well. It does not always have to be associated, it actually may not necessarily be associated with a solar uh, facility, because we do have a lot of rooftop collectors at this point in time that are, uh, pumping their electricity into, into the grid at this point in time in, in, in the, in the local sense. And from that perspective, they do not have the ability, as a solar field may have, to be able to uh, catch and then eventually, if you wanna call it release, uh, afterwards, tho- those, those electrons at, at, at times that are, are beneficial. So again, I just, I just wanna present this here to the board as an interesting opportunity, which I think the town has. Especially with the interest for us to also look at potential revenue sources. And we do have sources of land where this could be potentially cited. So, uh, I, 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 I second what, what Alice has been saying here. I think if you have, especially Dan, if you have some understanding or knowledge or additional information, specifically when it comes to where we can pursue this here from a either bylaw perspective, an ordinance perspective that we can
Yep, I'm on it.
Good. I think that's all we had at really thought about adding to the town meeting agenda this spring.
Okay, sounds good.
Alice, and planning board members, just quickly, uh, based off experience and guidance we're getting from other towns in the state. Um, it does not look like public hearings will be allowed short of a vaccine or some change before town meeting. Um, we're looking at months, not not days in terms of, uh, public hearings being held. So towns that have been the most successful have scheduled public hearings way in advance, say if you wanted to hold, scheduling one now for February and advertising it now, you get more people and you fight that, um, that idea that people didn't know about it. By really talking about it for a long time. So be my recommendation to, um, get something on the calendar and just start advertising it for a long time to get maximum participation.
Okay, we'll definitely do that with the signed by law right away. Okay, thank you.
All right, well, Alice, yeah, if you've got nothing else, if you, if you guys wanna, um, close out your meeting?
Okay, um, motion to adjourn from one of my members?
Alice, Bill Holmes, I'll make that motion.
A second? Francois, there, somebody?
Yes, Francois seconds the motion.
Okay, it's not debatable, all in favor of adjourning our, the planning board from this meeting, uh, lived all eye?
Tiger, eye.
Bill Holman's eye.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
All right. All right, um, we will carry on now, um, getting a little bit late, eight o'clock, so hopefully we can get through a few of these things, um, item four C. Item 4C is the 2020 license renewals. Ryan?
Hey, Bobby, you want to quickly take us through this process and explain this document?
Sure, I put one in the G drive. Everybody actually is renewing their licenses this year, with the exception of the Netison Home and Sterling Machine and Mold. They're both retiring, so they won't be getting their licenses again this year, but everybody else will be.
So this is for the board, your annual license renewals. Packets were, or requests for packets were sent out. Everyone returned theirs and was vetted by Bobby. So this is a list for your approval. Pending any questions, additional information, you can vote this as one list.
Sounds good. So we need a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make the motion to renew the licenses as presented.
Second motion.
I think that was a motion by Pat. Can I just confirm a second?
I seconded.
Okay, Jeff seconded. Any discussion? All right, we'll go to a vote, roll call. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Sounds good. Do we have any action there, Bobby?
No.
Signature wise?
Nope, they've all been signed.
Yeah, okay. Item 4D is the accounting inter municipal agreement with Templeton. Ryan, want to give us an update here, which, which you already have?
Yes, so we discussed this a while back. We had entered into a, what was a pretty successful agreement with Templeton. Unfortunately, our, our town accountant Kelly, who we were sharing, no longer is working for, for Templeton because of, because of a move that she wants to make. And they do not want to work with a remote accountant like we have in the past. So additionally, we did interview with Templeton, other accountants, and quite frankly, as we found last time, there isn't a lot of candidates who've done accounting work before, who are willing to work for towns of our size. And in the ones that we did think were qualified, they, they balked at the idea of doing two towns. So we think that although we had a pretty good agreement, it, it wouldn't be in our best interest to continue. I met with Templeton and they agreed. They're looking to hire just a full-time accountant for, for their operations as they were growing. And we weren't getting, I would say, the full hours that, that we should have gotten in, in any case, although we were pretty successful with our accounting operation. So with the board's approval, I, I have sent this to, I would be appointing Kelly. Kelly would maintain as our town accountant, just not through the Templeton IMA. And we'd be testing this for six months as she works remotely. We've talked with all parties and vetted all necessary sources and we believe this will work. We don't think it'll be much different than what we do now. And I think it's good for the town.
Okay, sounds good. So you want us to give you the blessing with a vote?
It's more if anyone has any questions, I just wanted to talk about it publicly before we make big changes. There will be also some shuffling as I put in your packet of personnel to, to accommodate this. That includes Christina stepping down from a full-time role and becoming the board's assistant, Bobby moving to a full-time finance assistant role, and us moving our assessing services to what we call backend services supported by Bobby. And the total, the total cost impact of all of these changes to include, I think, solidifying the hours and wages necessary to keep everybody in a sustainable position would be about $2,000 in FY21, which we can absorb. And if everything went the way we think it would, 4,000 additional dollars in FY22, which is a pretty efficient reallocation of resources.
So if this goes forward, what, when would it come into effect? Meaning, when will we lose Bobby?
December 31st.
Okay. Okay, well, let us know.
Okay. I'm sorry, looking at my notes, it literally says, Ryan, don't forget this dummy, that you do need to vote to, to come out of the accounting IMA with Templeton. So to exercise an out clause in agreement with Templeton to leave the IMA.
Jeff, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we exercise, what you call it, the, an out clause of the IMA with Templeton.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? No, we'll vote, roll call. Dan, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. And next is for E, which is the long-term capital investment discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to show you this briefly, just so we're not planning or talking in a vacuum. So this is a document I've created for the capital improvement planning committee. The CIPC will be discussing tomorrow night with them. So what, this is also something the boards asked me to do, which is incrementalize the big problems facing our town. So the big problems being the structural budget deficit, which you'll see at your next meeting. The lack of appropriate municipal building space and then fitting long-term capital or large capital expenditures like fire trucks, for example, and ambulances into, into our long-term planning. So what I did with this document, and I'm just showing it to you and can break it down even further if you want, is how much it would cost to fund all of these problems? And then what that would mean in terms of operational or debt expenditure? And then breaking that down into tax impact based off of the current tax rate. So for example, if you built an $8 million public safety building, and none of this is being discussed, it's just, well, it is being discussed, but none of it is final, so I'm just using examples. You would need a 40-year debt exclusion, which would cost about 320,000 annually or $181 on a $4,000 harvest and tax bill. So if you took à la carte, whatever you wanted to discuss in terms of, would we want to put money into the budget deficit or renovating the slade building or any of the other projects that have been discussed? This is just a menu to show you kind of what that would cost and how to place it into context. So the CIPC definitely asked for this. We're going to be discussing it tomorrow, if anyone's interested in coming to that meeting. But I wanted to show it to you as well, because you would request this information and we'll be using it moving forward.
Yes, thank you for doing this. And the intent of doing this and, and us asking, asking sort of again for this and for you to focus on it as one of your goals, in my mind, is not to wear people down. That's not the point.
No.
It's, it's just not. It's not to get it in there now to wear people down. So eventually they say, screw it, fine, let's do something. It's just to understand it, because it's things that we're going to need eventually. We said we're not going to stick our head in the sand about stuff like this. So at least it lays it out there. And, and you know, the more time people have to comment on it, you know, as we continue to talk about it, however long it takes, years or whatever, we can at least, you know, understand what it's going to cost. And when it just comes up out of the blue, it's impossible to get past the noise. So when it's done like this, I think it's just a, a better chance of, of, you know, weeding out what's just not going to happen and then things that maybe possibly will. So thanks for doing this.
Just briefly, and I could talk about this data all day, select data, but the, the decision point that I keep bringing up, the 2023, the 2013 road project, which is coming off the books in terms of debt. Right, so that's about $180,000 out of the operating budget. So you could do a couple of things with that. You could save that money in the budget and try and solve the budget deficit. You could borrow for things that are coming up in the next five to 10 years, which is our, a new fire truck and a new ambulance, which would be, you know, approximately $120,000 a year. So you could save that space in terms of borrowing to make sure that you have the money for that. Or you could use that money to, say, renovate the slade building, borrow for that and solve one of those problems. So that's a big piece of the puzzle. But that, that decision has to be made in the next two years. So what are we going to do with that expiring debt? The problem is if you take it out of the operating budget, then it's probably never going to go back in, but it does solve the deficit problems. These long-term problems, just want to show them to you. We keep talking about them as decision points that need to be made. So just another way to look at it.
Coupled with potential revenue new sources, such as one we discussed tonight, like the marijuana and others we may not know about yet that may come along through a pilot program for another solar, for example. So
Worst case.
Yes, right. So anyway, okay, well, that it for that?
Worst. Yes.
All right, next item is, is 4F, which is the town-owned property discussion, which, which Alice alluded to a little bit.
So it's another brief one. So we've had two residents reach out to me asking if they could purchase little parcels of land near, that about their property that we own. There's probably 30 properties in town that we own, and I'd say half of them are things we picked up over the years because of tax title or just pieces of land that, that don't really fit into any long-term planning. So what I'm looking for, and it doesn't have to be tonight, is guidance from the board on, do we want to spend some time and, and energy packaging these up and bringing it to town meeting for a vote so that you can sell them or work on auctioning them off or any of the other options that are available? Or not? Or do we want to attack them as people approach them? The problem being, it has to go to town meeting. So if someone says, hey, I want to buy this piece of land now, we're going to have to wait until July to dispose of it if you wanted to. So packaging it all together and seeing what you want to do with it might help make these decisions long-term.
Okay. Ryan, if I could ask you a question. Could I ask Ryan a question based on what I read in the packet? The properties we're talking about are basically nothing that we personally could develop simply because of the nature of the properties and that corrected, like abutting most of these people's property? Is not developable?
Yep, some landlocked pieces, some non-buildable pieces. And it had been mentioned before as part of my goals from a selectman that's no longer here, but we have enough, he said we had enough conservation land, so we don't need to be holding properties, so we should be doing something with them. So I just want to make sure that that stays on the front burner.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So Ryan, is this, is this something that we could take those 30 some odd properties, I think you said, and make a decision cumulatively so that we can, you know, act on these same 30 properties the same way as the need arises or as the questions about them arise? Or is it something we would have to do with each individual property as it's brought before us for whatever use or for whatever purpose?
Yeah, so the, the town meeting has to convey the ability to sell to, to the board. So in the Ragged Hill example, several years ago, the town said, take those five properties and do something with them on behalf of the town. They gave you that power. So the board was then able to swap one piece of land, do one affordable housing project and sell three pieces. The same thing would apply to the rest of your town-owned land. If you wanted to go to the town and ask them to convey that to you as a group, then you would have the ability to, to address these as they come up, as you said. Or not. So it would require a significant amount of legal work and, and my time. So I just want to see how much effort you want me to put into this and, and resources to get this ready. I do think it's advantageous, but you know, maybe it's not the board's will right now. I just want to make sure you weigh in on it.
Is there a list somewhere of these that I could like see so I can like grasp, like without seeing what these properties are? I have no idea whether I even believe they'd be worth it or not. You know what I mean?
So that's the next step. I just didn't want to give you a list of properties and say, what do you want to do with this? So this is just an intro and you're to the next.
I'd rather see, I want the list first. Be like, yeah, that's worth it or no, that's just crap, you know?
If I had brought you the list, you'd have said to do it the other way. That's true.
No, I would not. So full of it.
Well, regardless of the list and what the properties are like, I think we need to get in front of the town, a town meeting for all the properties, right? Wouldn't that streamline the process for the select board to make the decisions on what to do with these 30 properties, once we get the blessing from the, from the townsfolk at town meeting? Is that the way I'm understanding it?
I think so. I think that's true.
I would suggest we do that.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Is there any way, Ryan, is there any way to address these two properties that we have interest in before town meeting? Or do we have to wait for regardless?
And that's what spurred this idea was need more flexibility when opportunities pop up and we're a limited resource town. So looking at them all might be worth it. I just wanted to make sure the board was interested and it sounds like you are, so I can do that for you.
Add it to the list, buddy.
It's fun.
Okay, anything further on this item, anybody? No, okay. So we're on to old business now, item five, which is the first is 5A, the 2021 community survey, final draft, which you've, we've circulated to. Why don't you tell us who you've circulated that to?
So I sent the same thing I sent to this board, to all the board chairs and committee chairs in town and other interested parties. I also worked with Susan Rain from the finance committee to, she's, she's a smart lawyer lady to really work on these, to make them impactful from the finance side and wording wise. So I believe the copy in front of you is everything that I want to ask and the other boards wanted to ask to include some of the questions we just talked about with long-term capital planning. So if you would do support spending additional dollars on roads, how much? And if you don't, how would you like us to address it? How do you get information from the town? How would you like us to get information from the town? And what are the, what are the problems as you see them as a resident? So this would direct me and really you towards, you know, what we should be focusing on. So it's just another data point. I want to keep the survey open for a really long time and really target people with mailings and, you know, some online targeting to try and get you some data points. It, it won't necessarily be, you know, 100% of residents, but I think it can help shape some of these conversations. So just another way to chip away at it.
Sounds good. You're gonna, you're not going to have to leave it on a really long time because it usually gets, you know, just from the five or so we've been a part of over the last, I don't know, five years or so. The responses come usually reasonably soon after it gets sent out there. So you, you'll probably want to take a look at the results quicker than you think.
So we're going to finalize this, hopefully the end of this week and get it out next week. Take advantage of people being, well, people are home anyway, but home for the holidays. Looking to see if there's anything missing that the board wanted to ask to help you with your decision-making. Anything at all?
I'd like to present to the board, because I I sent this to Ryan when I looked at the, at the survey and I posed the question. So I'm asking the board for your own feelings about this. Would it be advantageous to ask a question on the survey directly if the town was in favor of pursuing, if you will, business in retail slash or commercial development for our town pits? I'd be happy to hear what the board has to think about that. I, I feel that's an area that we should be pursuing and I think it'd be interesting to get the response from the survey with a direct question about the pits.
Sure. I mean, I, I have no, I'm, I'm in support of asking the questions without a doubt. It does present additional questions that inevitably will come up, like detail of what that means, right? Because over the past, we've had all sorts of rumors about what might or might not be going there. So but overall, as far as a, just a, a question for, for support, I guess you're going to start somewhere, right? So I mean, I, it makes sense to me.
Anybody else feel that way? Because I, I personally would like to see that included in the survey, but if the board doesn't support it, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't push it. It happens to be an interest of mine ever since I've been a selectman to get business to come into town and the question of our town pits just being there and they are certainly available. available for a lot of possibilities.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, asking the question can't, can't hurt at all, right? It's something that's available to us. It's something we're pursuing. It's something we've always thought about. Um, you know, frankly, I don't know, you know, if, if, if the survey comes back and says, no, we don't want to pursue developing the town pits. I mean, you know, does that deter us from doing so? I don't know. But I think it doesn't hurt to add the question. If we're asking all the questions anyways, we might as well have it on there.
Agreed.
Okay. Anyone else?
Could I then make the, a formal request if, if you don't mind, Ryan, could we get that put on there then?
I already got it. I already got it here. Do the bus.
Thank you very much.
All right, cool. Um, all right, Ryan, that it for the survey?
All right. Yes. I just need your help pushing it to, um, you all know a lot of people, so make sure you push that out when it's available.
That's in the book. Uh, okay. So we're at the old business five B, which is fire station exhaust mitigation contract finally.
Yeah, I'm fighting the urge to use the pun exhausted, but this is the final, final, um, contract for the procurement of exhaust mitigation system. So just to rewind, cause this actually goes even before Chris was on the board. We, uh, attempted to procure a exhaust mitigation system, um, through some fault of mine, some fault of bidders, some fault of just the, the specs used. The procurement was, was not done well. And then, um, it got really complicated. And then we learned that these always get complicated because there's only two, two people who do these and, and they tend to fight each other, um, about the procurement. So we went through a significant process with an engineer, designed a product specific to us and had the engineer work with these two companies to vet the procurement out. We went through the state contract bid list, had the attorney general's office make sure that everything was, was done correctly. And we are now ready to award this bid to Murphy's Specialty, Inc. And, um, the contract is in your packet. I can put it up for you. Um, we have a, a agreement from the engineer that this is the lowest and most responsive bid. So with your approval, we'll be signing this contract and going ahead with the actual building of this thing that's going to help, you know, preserve the health of our public safety officers, which is, which is what we wanted to do in the beginning.
And what, what building is this, Ryan?
This will be the, um, both fire stations. So fire station one, and then the ambulance phase in fire station two. This will take the.
Long time coming.
So it's a pneumatic hookup. It hooks up to the exhaust pipes, uh, on all the vehicles and removes that to the outside so that, um, even when they're idling or ready, it's not impacting the equipment and the physical health of our employees.
All right. So you motion unanimously accept it?
And for me to sign it on your behalf.
I move to accept the contract as pre- uh, presented and to allow the town administrator to sign it on our behalf.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Just a quick question. When will it start, you think?
Uh, we're hoping it will begin this winter and be done before the end of winter. So even before spring.
Okay. Yeah. So forty-five day performance period on there.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, okay. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, we will vote roll call. Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Janice, thank you. And, uh, all right, we, we're going to the town administrator report. So, um, you're up.
Okay. So a quick COVID nineteen update. Uh, we are now, as of November twenty-seventh, a green community. Um, up from gray community. So what that means is we are a community of less than ten thousand. We are, and we have less than or equal to fifteen cases, but more than ten. So Hubbardson has thirty-six total cases since the pandemic began and fifteen in the last fourteen days, uh, our highest rise of the pandemic and an incident rate of twenty-two point nine cases per hundred thousand. So just to show you, this is the scale that's used. So high risk being red and then you move from, from gray to red. We are here in the green. And here is the actual data. Hubbardston being here is now a green town. Uh, we get this data every week. And what it means for us in terms of the town is really gauging how we should be reacting in terms of service levels, um, keeping public offices open. And it's definitely used by the schools in conjunction with the board of health to talk about, talk about that. So recommending no change to our current status, but we are recognizing a, a dramatic rise in cases in Hubbardson and across the state as people have seen in the news and, and across the country. So we're not immune to it. Uh, we also had our first employee test positive for COVID. So this employee, uh, traveled out of the state and did not, did not return to the offices. So there was no close contacts in the offices, but just a reminder that, you know, that we need to make sure that we're keeping our staff safe because any exposure or outbreak in our town offices or public safety offices would, would absolutely cripple us. So, um, still following all the precautions that are necessary and that employee, um, is now asymptomatic and, um, had a very mild case. So, um, just a little COVID nineteen update for you. I can answer any questions on that or continue on. All right. Hearing none. So we started in the land use department. This was a, a suggestion from Bill Murray, who you all know, and then executed nicely by, by Mallory. So we're, we're starting to, whenever we get a permit, coordinate department level meetings so we can all get on the same page and streamline. This was definitely the, the reason for moving to a land use department, but, um, nice to see it coming to fruition. And it was already helpful in some of the marijuana discussions. So this is bringing anybody involved in the permitting discussion to the table to include if a board of select member wanted to be involved in, in this, uh, we could invite people to see what new businesses and ventures are happening in town and, and get in on the ground floor and, and provide that level of input. And, um, a- another piece of news from the departments, the new economic development coordinator, Susan Bregy, has been working with our offices to, um, reinvent the town calendar on the, on the town webpage. Again, another effort to add information to folks. She's already put all of the senior center information up there, worked with Katie on special events, and we sent out and we will continue to send out reminders to people, even if it's a civic event like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Lions Club, and people want to get it on the town calendar, we'd, we'd love to be a source of information, one of the reasons for getting that EDC coordinator position going. In terms of final, financial management, we completed the audit process and we will have a date for you of your audit review. Probably it's your next meeting, if not the following one. Uh, the audit went very well and we expect to have some, some good news, some good findings for you about the state of our town finances. We are awaiting guidance from the state to see whether or not we're going to be able to continue using the CARES Act. But as of now, it ends December thirtieth. So we're winding down any services related to CARES Act money usage as we do not have the resources to continue the service levels we have been. Um, also some news that came out today that's not in here is we have a final tax rate. So the tax rate of fourteen eighty-one that was presented to you is the tax rate. So great job by everyone. That, that is no small effort. Um, some grant news, the, the one we were really hoping for, the twenty-twenty Mass Works Grant on Lombard Road, we, we did not get. Um, I have my feelings on our competitiveness here, which is why we are starting to pivot towards the, the High Street Brigham Road discussions that we were having. Um, Lombard Road is a, is a decision we're gonna have to make. And if it's not gonna be grant-worthy or grant-eligible, then it's gonna tie up chapter ninety for a long time. So I'm not ready to have that discussion tonight, but one that is coming for sure. It does need to be fixed, but it's a multi-year project, given its costs of about a million dollars to fix the entire road. The police department got some good news. They got a bind, burn, justice assistant or a JAG grant. Uh, this is gonna pay for some body cameras and some video cameras and some stuff that we approved at, at town meeting for, for capital, for cameras. So that'll save us some money. And it was a great job by Chief Perrin and staff getting that together. And then the town offices received a sixty thousand dollar community compact IT grant. So this was also in the capital plan that we can take off. This will be adding some software to help make our street files and other, um, property-related files available to the public. And we'll also eliminate almost all of our old paper records and make them digital. Uh, very safe storage redundancies across the board, but, um, searchable. It'll save employees time and is, is, we're not the only ones to do this, but we certainly are one of the few towns of our size really looking to free up this space. Then you know about the exhaust mitigation system, so I won't go over that again.
Can I just chime in real quick? Question on the, on the, um, is it just the software for, for that? Or is it the, you know, man slash woman power to actually put it all in a different, uh, place?
So it, it does include, um, a significant chunk of the backlog scanning.
Sounds good.
It's actually, most of it is the scanning costs and then creating that online portal for street files. So you should be able to picture Mallory being able to access a certain address from, from all different angles of land use and then the public having access to the, those files so that they don't have to come to town hall. They can print it themselves. It's, it's gonna be a pretty good initiative.
Okay.
Okay. Some, um, the, another infrastructure update we're working on with the Lions Club to schedule the gazebo roof. I know Chris was, was definitely interested in this, um, and had asked about it. We, looks like we'll be doing that in the spring, but we have already selected the contractor and just working out the final details. So I should have a date soon. The Parks Department has coordinated with the DPW to, and already purchased the portable ice rink. It'll go on the Curtis Rec Field. The DPW is gonna assist to help keep it open. And that's gonna be really cool. I can't wait to skate at my lunchtime with people in a socially distanced, safe manner. And then we started to assess the library foundation with some engineers. I've been working with the trustees on that to, um, to see what we're gonna need to do in terms of shoring up the, the library foundation, which was part of the long-term plan. Then lastly, you know, you all know this name and, and many people know how much he does for the town, but, um, Dennis O'Donnell is our emergency management director. Talked to a lot of people in my positions. Very few have the type of dedicated volunteer that we have with the knowledge level that he has. Single-handedly filed the MEMA FEMA grants and coordinated with me on the CARES Act to make sure that we can fund all the things that we need to fund properly. So I think, uh, Dennis deserves a ton of credit. He, he gets us maximum dollars for windstorms and definitely stepped up the plate during this, um, COVID environment, helping me to coordinate and the town to react to COVID nineteen. So wanted to call out his above and beyond behavior, um, and achievement during this, this time period. You all know that Dennis is great, but, um, just wanted to throw another accolade his way as someone who's indispensable in town.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Ryan. That it for the report?
Uh, I have one more thing. So you already know about this and it's in your packet, but we have to sign a sub-grantee agreement with the Quavon Regional School District so that we can transfer CARES Act fund to them for their purchase of student Chromebooks and teacher laptops. Due to some supply issues, we may not be able to do the Chromebook purchase, but we are looking to assist the schools in their request to beef up their technology for remote learning. Uh, this will all be Hubbardson Center School equipment, as we discussed previously. So in order to transfer this money, the state is requiring us to sign this vetted sub-grantee agreement that's in your packet. So if you're willing to support that and allow me to sign it, um, could use that motion.
Make the motion for you to be allowed to sign what was called it?
Sub-grantee agreement with the Quavon Regional School District.
The sub-grantee agreement with the Quavon Regional School District on our behalf.
I'll second it.
Okay. Second it. Any discussion? Seeing none. We'll vote roll call. Dan, yes. Um, Katie?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous. Sounds good. All right, Ryan. Thanks for the report. Item seven is policies review. We don't have anything tonight. And then we get to item eight, which is appointments and resignations. Uh, we'll start with eight A, which is appointments. Uh, we've got two. Um, we could probably do those together. It's the same committee. That'll be Bill Shea and, and Tom Collier, uh, for the Vietnam Memorial Committee.
I'll make the motion to appoint Bill Shea and Tom Collier to Vietnam Memorial Committee.
Second emotion.
Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, that's great. Uh, we'll take a vote. You know, uh, roll call. Dan, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
All right. Janice, I'm glad that's getting off the ground. Um, and the next would be, um, eight B, which is resignations. Uh, again, we could probably do it with one vote. That would be Donna McGrath and Lori Churchill from the Economic Development Committee.
I'll move to accept the resignations of Donna McGrath and Lori Churchill from the Economic Development Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. That's seconded. Uh, discussion? Okay. We'll vote. Uh, roll call. Dan, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay. It is unanimous. Um, we are on to wage authorization. Um, we want to do this for Andrea Mastrotto, Mastrotto.
So I don't, I don't have this one in your folder tonight. Um, Andrea is, we are testing out having a recording secretary for, for boards to use for minutes. And she's serving in that role right now, but I will bring this to you at your next meeting.
Okay. So we're on to item ten, which is minutes to approve. So this was, uh, a challenge, right? Cause we didn't, uh, um, record, uh, the entire meeting. Um, but is, is anyone have any comments? Uh, if they do, um, please, uh, let them know now or, or during discussion if this does go to a vote, but we do have minutes from, uh, November sixteenth, two thousand twenty, which I believe we're all, except for, uh, Pat Atten, you see them in front of us. So, um, they're there.
So make the motion to accept the minutes of the select board meeting, November sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Second it.
Okay. That's seconded. Um, any discussion? Nope. Uh, great job, Bobby. Uh, and we will go to a vote, roll call, and that'll start with me. Dan, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Pat?
Abstain.
For yeses and one abstain, abstention. Uh, okay. No committee updates. I don't have any. Um, I don't know if anyone else does. Feel free to chime in. Um, item twelve is matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Again, I, I don't have any. If anyone has anything they want to bring up, um, please do, please go.
Uh, uh, just one, I'd like to ask, uh, one question if, if Ryan's available. Um, when the materials or whatever is going to be sent out to the town regards to the, uh, marijuana, uh, questions and so forth, I, I keep getting the impression when I hear different people's comments as they entered in tonight, for example, that people, and I may be reading it wrong, but I get the impression that some people think that this is just as still an up and down vote, that the town in fact has not already said, yes, we are a yes town. And I think that should be pre- sent out also with the information that we're not in a situation where we're voting down this business. The town has already voted in favor of, uh, along with the state. And I think that's important to keep that clarification because I get the impression a lot of people just still think this is an up and down situation that they. Situation that they can vote it down now. The town already voted yes on this.
Well, it's right. Um, I I think a good way to put that maybe is a timeline, Ben Ryan, you know? So when when the when the town first, you know, sort of voted as a a yes town and then the the. Several other uh, timeline events beyond that can can clearly show the process, it's uh, or the the route that it's gone to now.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else from anybody? Uh, okay, nope, see nothing. Um, we are now at public press question, answer, anything come in, Ryan? I don't see anything in the chat. Anything you know about?
Nothing.
Okay, uh, sounds good. So we do have executive session, correct?
Yes, quick one.
And we have executive session similar to our last meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, make the motion and to adjourn the public meeting to move into executive session. Under general laws, chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have been a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
I declare.
In the police, the National Association Incorporated, local. Oh nine two and town of Hubbardson Police Department, Teamsters Union Local. Row one seventy and the Hubbardson DPW and the Town Administrator Ryan McLean. After which we will adjourn the executive session meeting with no intent of returning to the public meeting.
I'll second.
All right, seconded. Um, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll go to a roll call vote. I just want to thank everybody who who's uh, come tonight and who's who's stayed. Um, we will be um, booting you out shortly to go into executive session, but uh, once again, thanks a lot for. For sticking around and and uh, providing your your input um, for the meeting. So uh, to to roll call vote, that'd be Dan, yes, Katie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
And Pat?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Um, thank you.